Okay, we can call the meeting to order. I will receive the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes and accept the man's presentation.
You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone has a copy of the agenda? Are there any additions, or?
I had one addition at 7C, Sunset Plaza, Alpine.
Okay.
Do you want to postpone in 11:00?
Yeah, we'll just discuss it when we get it.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved. Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to 4A, the 2016 street project update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, yeah, Beckton's been hitting pretty hard. They have the removals and the subway done on Fayette up there. They have the gravel days in, and they're testing it tomorrow. So if everything is good, hopefully, depending on the rain, they can get her out there either Friday or early next week, depending on their schedule, and they can get their concrete company mobilized. I read it. Go ahead.
How many tons of dirt do they have all on it?
Uh, off down there, probably around 1,100 cubic yards, something like that. Sunflower, they went down there for a little bit when Steen was up there moving hydrant that had to be moved on Fayette, so they just removed topsoil. They're probably gonna move down there as soon as the gravel's done on Fayette, since it's a different company doing the concrete and stuff. Steen was here on Thursday, and they installed the fourth gate valves that weren't working on Seventh and the hospital. It was a big shutdown. It worked really well, I think it was only out of water for two hours or something. They did the fire hydrant over on Sunflower today, and the parts that they ordered for the services that were placed on Seventh, they haven't come in, they're not starting that tomorrow. Orders on Thursday, so, something like that.
Okay.
Yep. Hydrants, I guess why do we have to move that too?
Uh, because at least on Fayette, the road got wider than what the gravel was, and that hydrant would've been right in the middle of the sidewalk. It would've kind of tied the sidewalk in, so we just pushed it back behind the sidewalk. And then the one on Sunflower, the radius where it ties in with the road, would've went, the curb would've went right through it, so we had to pull it back from that as well. Also, that one was so old, it was so low, those are supposed to be at least 18 inches, if not higher, off the ground, most of them were like 24 or 36, so they can get their ranch up there and just spin them off, but it was so low that they would've been down to that. And two, if a car hit it, the breakoff would've been on the ground, it would've broken off, and it wouldn't have been a good deal. So we got new one, breakoff five inches above the gravel. And, uh, while I spoke with Pam, Jerry?
Okay.
He was ordering about a quarter-foot, like, area of curb?
Yeah, he gave me all about that this morning. He said there's some back crawl. Is that the, that's the one on the corner of Seventh and Seventh over there, right, that orplex? Yeah, I drove by, it's not too bad, I guess we could, if you guys wanted to replace it, we could, it wasn't a call-out. Because the only curb we were doing is the stuff that they'll cut through on Seventh for the services. If you guys wanted to, I can have them add that in, but it would be in addition to the project. Is that road we're just milling?
No, it's just, there's a road spot with a brake on that area.
But, I mean, there's a lot of, you can chase curb like that all over town, so I guess I can leave it up to you guys to discussion what you guys want to do, but I know there's a lot of curb that could be, you know, replaced down town, so.
Right, and I agree, I mean, I'd say, I'd further encourage Thomas to force it.
Yeah. It's all I have for the project.
Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, then we can move on to the Commerce Center parking lot.
Shouldn't hang out, there's questions for the Thomas parking lot?
Any questions on that?
Parking lot?
So the total was, is that 40,000?
Yeah, 40, 49,000, yes. That's before we have survey take, actual get the actual quantities off. That was just based off of Monty's rough measurements. And then, uh, I guess, I suppose, I guess, are they able to do, do, I guess, removal for that? They can, if that's what you, we said, they can do that if you guys want to go that route. I didn't put any, I do have the removals in here, so if you have, you know, if you have that removed asphalt, it'll be 6,400, cheaper, roughly.
And that would be the in- in case?
Yeah, yeah. It was our scope to Beckton, I'm gonna be like, you guys can just come in and do the dirt work and build the section and build the parking lot, and you have those guys just do the asphalt removal.
Did you get a chance to visit with Clary, and if they would do it?
I did, he said they would, they would do it for their good prices. So, that's good.
So on this, we just need approval from the council if we want to go ahead with it, or?
We make a decision as to which half.
Which way you want to go, asphalt or concrete?
It looks to me that the plan here is solid as it relates to the asphalt for almost half the price. And, you know, recognizing the fact that we're getting the prices based upon the project that's going in, seems reasonable, in my opinion, that we would move forward as an attachment onto the existing project.
I make the motion, we go with the payment, and have we been do the removal, plus the 6,400, right?
Yep, that's the rough, yes, yeah.
There is a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion?
So then I guess this would be, be against special assembly?
It would be a city, yeah, it would go along with the citywide, yeah.
Yeah, the special section.
Yeah, just to see who pays. Is there any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Pat?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, and then on to the engineering, RFP. Everyone, did you get a chance to look through those, and?
I didn't get a chance to, I guess, read through them all at once.
Okay.
And, and I guess in visiting with President Oren, he was hoping that there would be a little more time to look at them and then decide if you're gonna have a small group or committee do interviews, if that's your plan to proceed that way, or you'll just appoint them the next meeting and do your reorganization.
Okay, and that would be my recommendation, give a little bit more time, and if you want to go through them, and get your suggestions to Monty and/or Jerry, and we can make a decision at the next meeting. Okay, we'll put that one aside. And before we continue, I'd like to welcome Dan to the board. I forgot to do that earlier. Okay, we'll go on to request of citizens. An application from St. Martin's for Rappel.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We can just do an all in favor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one is a request for free or reduced hall rent from the Hazen Arts and Crafts.
Indicate they will not need kitchen, so the $50 basic kitchen fee will not apply in this.
It's gonna be in October?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 7A, Renaissance Zone application from Tractor Supply. Buster?
My board met last week, and we did approve a Renaissance Zone application for Tractor Supply. And just some of the details that we had talked about is that they're projecting, I don't see as of approximately $3 million a year in Hazen. Actually, the report that I, that they had sent to me was like 2.8 in overall tax benefit to the, sales tax benefit to the city. It's roughly in the neighborhood of about $43,000. So, keeping that in mind, what we talked about also was, is that, given the fact that the Alco building had been vacant for a couple of years, it will be actually two years in October now. We thought it would be appropriate to treat Tractor Supply as a new business, because it had been vacant previously. So that's how we proceeded, when we made our decision in terms of the request, our request. And basically, what we talked about is this, is that we're recommending that you approve 100% for the two years, tax abatement, and then 75, year three, 50, and 25, which would take it through the five-year period. And I did do a proposed sheet there for you in terms of, if you wanted to take a look in terms of what would the dollars that, you know, in that period of time, there'd be like $84,000 that'd be coming into the city. You'd be abating 50,000 of that, and the total tax that you'd be still collecting would be 25 from that. And there was a breakdown of those. Now, the other thing that we did is this, even though, when we did the application, we did it based on our numbers that we had from Alco, because that was the best guess that we had. We anticipated that this property would be valued a little bit higher, so we actually went up to another half a million, so we went to one and a half million on the property. And so, and, so, the numbers that I'm presenting to you in terms of the savings over the five years would be based on 1.5 million, in terms of where the tax incentive would be. And, of course, the other part is, is they would be going into the expanded zone that we did get, that we did approve, that expanded block. So, any questions?
Matt, sure, I'm gonna give. Do you know, my understanding is that Alco isn't, aren't in the, on the property?
That's correct, yes.
And, and do you know for sure that this, if it's agreed to, I apologize for raising my question?
Yes, that's okay.
But will it pass on to the tenant? Because, but there's a different landlord.
Yeah, yes, it will. In fact, what they're doing is they're signing a triple net lease, so Tractor Supply will be responsible for all of the, all of the taxes, and everything else that goes along with that. Yeah.
So I guess was there, was there, I guess, any talk for just giving them the tax, tax incentive on their, on their new, I guess, buildings and their new, I guess?
On the, actually, we, we had some minor discussion about that, but part, I think, of the problem was, is trying to put a value on what we thought that would be. You know, I did see some spreadsheet information from them, early on, where they're planning to put close to $500,000 in upgrades to the property, into the building. But as we talked about at our meeting, just because you put those kinds of dollars into a project, doesn't necessarily mean that the value of that property will go up equally. You know, like Justice said, that typically rule of thumb is, it might go up maybe a third, it's more like a quarter, in terms of. So, I think from the standpoint, and again, what we were saying is this, from the standpoint of being that that facility has been vacant for a couple of years, it would be, of course, I think everybody would agree, it would be a great addition to the city. And as far as the tax incentive, over the years, you'll recoup many dollars more than, even in the first year, you'll recoup many dollars more than you would just through the sales tax incentive, you know, the penny, or the two cents, the penny and a half, I guess, yeah. So, so, yeah.
Yeah, I guess just to tag on to that a little bit, there's already new buildings going up out there. I mean, all they did on the inside is, if you were in there, there were the loading area and storage area. There was a wall over there in the, kind of on the east side for that area. That wall got moved over. They had to go in there and redo the electrical in there, because how the store's gonna be laid out is not the same way that Alco was laid out, for the lighting, the cash registers and all of that. Those types of things cost a lot of money, and it knows, gonna add any value to the building? I don't see where it's gonna change it much. And the concrete work that they're doing on the west side of the building, that's only gonna be a concrete display, outdoor display area, fenced out, or display area. And then they're gonna do something similar to that on the, on the east side, as far as an outdoor display area, too. There isn't gonna be any more buildings out there as such.
Is the overall approval of this also contingent on the state? I see there's significant savings to the organization also at the state level for state taxes?
Typically, you know, I mean, they'll, they'll definitely look at our paperwork and scrutinize it, but I don't anticipate them there being in issue with it, to be honest with you, because it's actually their program that they put in place, you know, to try and spur economic development in small communities. Well, not only small communities, large communities as well, yeah. And the approval actually comes from the Department of Commerce. And the, if I remember, think if I'm correct on this, I think where the savings actually comes from, that is from the Bank of North Dakota. Now, the other part is, is that they will be entitled to stadium of tax abatement as well, in addition to the property. But for us, we're mostly concerned about the property taxes. Okay?
Any other discussion? What would the board like to do?
Motion to proceed forward with the Renaissance Zone application for Tractor Supply, as proposed.
Do we have a motion, Mark?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Pat?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Okay, on to 7B, petition to vacate public grounds. Let's discuss them. What's that? Oh, motion passed. Petition to vacate public grounds?
Okay. Well, this all relates to the affordable housing project for Pioneer Park, and it has to do with the fact that many years ago, this property, the Cervol, was, what has become, what we look at as one property, was several properties. There was a small platted lot, there was a street that came through the middle of it, and then there was something that showed up on the end as a triangular piece that was never given a name or a number or anything like that. It was just called a triangular piece to the east of the lot, Lot 1, whatever, original town said, Hazel. And over time, in the '30s, they formed, the city passed an ordinance dedicating this to the public, as a public park, that they called the George Washington Memorial Park. I don't think anybody in town would know, if you asked them where George Washington Memorial Park is located, but that is it. It is the, what we kind of commonly refer to as Pioneer Park anyway, it's across the street from Heritage Park. And now that this is getting ready to be developed into a housing project, in order to abandon the public use, it requires a vacation process, similar to vacating easement. And so the city would have to agree to abandon that public use portion of the property. Now, what's planned is that this triangular-shaped piece of property, which includes the old Lot 1, some property north there on the Den Street, and the other triangular piece, will become one block, and it will have two lots. And one lot will be the lot on which the public housing project, or the affordable housing project is located. The other lot will be retained by the city as a public park, and that contains the monument that's there, and a little bit of extra ground to the west of that, and then goes out to the street on the east. So that's, the intention of this particular resolution would be to, or petition, is to begin the process of abandoning that public portion that's to the west, so that it can be used for the public, for the affordable housing project. And it does take some time, and so we thought we'd initiate it early on. And in conjunction with that, HCD, which owned the hospital portion of it, is deeding the hospital, the old hospital portion, to the city, so the city will be the sole owner of that whole piece of property, and can decide what to do with it. But the intent, of course, is to use that whole west half for a month and a half, but that west portion for the affordable housing project. So that's the background.
Okay, yeah.
So then the city's gonna be the, the owner of the, the old, I guess, the old hospital?
Field Hospital?
Very briefly, we hope. The intent with, is that that portion then be deeded to the Hazen Housing Authority, which has formed a subsidiary to own that property. And if that fails for any reason, it, the, there's an agreement out there that will be, the city will be assigned onto for the land use, and it will say that if that does not happen, it's deeded to the Hazen Housing Authority, then it will revert, one portion will revert back to the, the portion that they purchased. And then the city will, if they go through this process, of course, they'll have abandoned the public use of the remaining portion. So it's kind of a set of dominos here that we're dealing with.
So basically, it would go back to a surgical state if it doesn't?
No, no, I mean, it would take another rededication to turn back to a public use.
Yeah, I can just, you know, I had mentioned this before, but this is, this is probably the last piece of the technicalities that we have to get our note on, so that we can get our actual hands on the dollars to start the project. So, I'm glad that we have people like Pat who understand all this stuff, because I don't. But by doing it in this format, after consulting with them, it will speed up the process somewhat, and that's what we want, is we, we want to try to get, so we can get in there fairly quickly, get this here, it's, things moving, so.
I make a motion that we move forward in approving the petition to vacate the public grounds as described by Pat.
There is a motion on the floor?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Miller?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passed. Property deed, HCD to City of Hazen.
Committee to take this transfer sports. So, in a, in a special meeting that we had today to kind of speed these things up, basically what ended up happening is, and it's quite a lengthy motion here, but I'll just read it with the exclusion of maybe the description of the property, but a motion was made by Jason, or James Saylor, to transfer the premises formerly known as the Jeffrey Banister property parcel, now owned by Hazen Community Corporation, to the City of Hazen for $1, for the purpose of an affordable housing project. As a condition of this transfer, it must be agreed that the City of Hazen, HCD, will be bound by a land use agreement, in a format dictated by the North Dakota Housing and Finance Agency. As a part of the land use agreement, the city will transfer this property and other city-owned property to Hazen Housing Authority, or a subsidiary thereof, for the project. HCD retains the right to reimbursement of its $40,000 investment it has in this land use agreement, or, excuse me, in this property. If for any reason this transfer does not occur before May 1st, 217, under the terms of the land use agreement, the city, the city will return the premises to HCD, and basically the description of the parcel. And the reason we put 217 in there is because if we don't get anything rocking and rolling by then, we'll lose our grant. So, everything kind of falls.
About $2 million, though.
Yes, 1.9 million.
And that was the motion that passed at your meeting today?
Yes.
Oster?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Say, you know, 40, 40, I guess, yep, 40, I guess, $1,000, what was that about?
That's what we paid for the property, and that is already built into the application process, so that'll be part of, once we can get our hands on the money, then some of those initial dollars that we have invested in there already paid, when I say we, HCD, we're gonna get a lot of, hold on, a big chunk of that background, I might just look at it. Yeah, yeah.
So do we need to do anything with this?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the?
Or accept the?
Accept the? Does do you actually define to give the property back?
That piece, by the way, is only, it was 78 by 2. That piece, by the way, is only 78 by 200 and some feet. I mean, it's just the building itself. You own everything around the building.
Yeah.
Right.
78 by 256.
Motion to approve, as Buster stated.
There is a motion on the floor?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Pat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Okay, on to reports. The President is not here tonight. Water and sewer.
We haven't related the site.
Yeah, it's true. Casey, streets?
The crew was out, oh, she was up, maybe Paulie has a sort of marriage yesterday too as well, so. I think, uh, okay, guys, maybe they're all here.
We drove around, and I see that they've really done a good job. There's a lot of it cleaned up. I think between the citizens and the community and the street workers, it's been a nice job. Everyone pitching in.
Can I ask a question? Is it, is it, just for the citizens, can they just set stuff out? I don't know, will the city pick that up, or should they be hauling their own, or? I, because I see piles of that all over, and I just don't know what the city is, green blue.
You always ask that too, when I said that, I mean, if the trees were, were, I mean, like by the street, I mean, the cities, I guess, boulevard, is that we would, or not?
In their backyard.
In their backyard, or maybe up front of the street, yeah, so, that's what I told them.
I think it's just good for the public to know what their, what they do.
Right, what their responsibilities are.
Yeah, the calls we took today, we were advising everybody that if they're boulevard trees, that they're cleaning up, the city will break those off, but any other stuff, there's a response.
And you got those all tagged.
Yes.
That's probably a better, I'm a green. That's pretty good, Oregon.
Any else, Casey? Okay, my report, I was at the, looking, drove by the bus barn again. It's moving slowly. I talked to Peg. Numbers for the quarter this year for, or this quarter for busing, they hauled 5,956 kids, or rides they had on the bus, so they've been busy again.
Have we had any interesting parties on the position posted yet or?
Always contact the meeting.
Yeah. Nope, that would be all I had. Police and fire?
The only thing that I have is, of course, you all attended the fireworks display, went off with a good name. I kind of liked that location up there. I don't know, first I was like, I didn't quite, and then I was like, you know what? I think between the new RV park tents and all around the city, we had quite the display before they started. Everybody kept asking me, is that the real one? Of course, I, you know, I, I took a few requests from citizens about shooting fireworks, and I just said, you know what, it's one time a year. You go to many different cities, and they're, like, they tell, like, there's Mark Men, and you can't shoot in the tower. They got, they go to Lincoln. You know, so it's very unfortunate, you know, it's, yeah, it's noisy, it's annoying at times, but you know what, it doesn't last very long, so. Other than that, the, the new police unit director, has that been two, two weeks?
They've got it finally all set up.
Yeah, so, and I don't know if they're ready to put that old one up for good.
Chuck was going to give me the information, so we can publish that through the tapes sealed in.
Okay. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, HCD?
Well, the only other thing that I have to add, other than, pretty well covered the Pioneer One thing, but from the hotel perspective, the market said he did come in, I did see Electronic Optic that today, and actually forwarded it to the developer. And so there's some things that we're, that we want to question in there, all what they, what they put in, in the study itself. So once I have a chance to talk with Jerry Boozman, our developer and whatever, we'll figure out, you know, what kind of questions we want to ask. One of the things that he shared with me was is that he was going to put a lot of, he thought he had a lot of mercenary data to, to the report. Well, he didn't. It's pretty skimpy, I mean, there was, there was no mention of the RV park up north here that, you know, that we have a new one in there, which I think would be impacting. And there were just other things, you know, even taking him around, contractors probably coming to town for instance, you know, none of that stuff, like, that was, was in there, in which I thought, so, again, I don't know, you know, and until I have a chance to really, really visit and dig into it some more, I would probably, you know, it's best not to say too much about it, and then, until we get the file report. So we shouldn't be too far away from, from where we're at, yeah.
You had mentioned last month, the, the new tenant coming into the Commerce Center, or are you prepared to make any announcements?
Well, and that might have been, I'm not sure, I don't recall saying that yet, but four J gun girl, Jill Wood, is, is in there, operational, and he is, he started doing first. And I did have an inquiry of the fifth, I call it the fifth location in there, or sixth location, because we actually have two small ones, and no, that'd be fine, I guess, but suite, I call it suite two from the ease next to the Iker place. At one time, there was a local business in town that showed some interest, that they were going to get out of the building near end, but they haven't gotten back to me, and now I had somebody else just inquire, just last week about that, so, so hopefully we'll be able to get it, get it filled.
Okay, on correspondence, a Hazen Chamber fireworks donation?
As I said, though, we basically, every year except this tenant here, the city has approved a donation for the fireworks, you know, $1,500.
And this would do every year, except for that one here, we do a thousand, right?
Yes, correct. That's what I'm telling you here. I make a motion that we contribute $1,500 toward the fireworks.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
There is a second. Discussion? You'll call?
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. And West River Telephone Surveillance Equipment Proposal?
Okay, the last meeting, we talked about adding some more cameras onto that quote, and then with the 16-channel NVR, I did do updated quote from here in that West River. The cameras are basically still the same as the other ones, so just add basically double the amount, add the X-3. The only change would be, and they recommend that as we do this, as fiber comes to town to go with the 10-meg client, it'll give us a lot more room for data, plus then we can out, set these systems up wirelessly, so that the NVR would actually be in the building here, and we would still get the feeds from all the different locations back here. And that's $49, $49.95 a month, and $10 more than having a one-meg circuit, which is pretty small for all this data that we're hoping to push through, and so I guess, if we're looking at doing this, it wouldn't come in until the fiber is installed, but. Do we know what that timeline is? Yeah, they're still saying this fall, but I don't know, they're way behind the way it sounds last time I came. So in essence, if we approve this, then we would, we'd be approving it and not move forward then, if we go with the 10-meg until that time.
Right. I'm going to wish the board.
And these costs for the equipment and stuff would be shared between the bus, the bus ramp to the facility, and the cameras for the shop, if there are any others.
Move to approve the camera installation from the bus barn and the city shop with the 10-meg.
There is a motion? Second. We have a second as our discussion.
We have the options on the equipment, to either pay the camera discount upfront or a 12-month payment plan, in which there is a little bit of dollars difference on that. Your intent on your motion.
I think we would, maybe just pay the upfront.
Call for the vote.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have the board reorganization. Normally, we do the portfolios and do the reorganization, but with Jerry gone, I would suggest that we wait until the next meeting, so we can have everyone here to go through this. But I think we discussed it a couple months ago about changing up when the election was, so that we could not get familiar with other portfolios. So sit down, think about where else you want to put your efforts into, and we'll discuss it the next meeting. Okay, and then we have the nuisance property.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it was, I don't know what the date here, 27th, I think it was, yeah. President Overhaw and I went around to various properties, and I guess we're showing various problems that are around the community, and whether or not we want, and what we want to do with them, and I guess, I'm going to start at the beginning, yeah. This one here, I guess, when we were going around, you had a pile of tree branches back here, you got a garage door that's not on there, and I think the next picture is basically zooming in more of the pile, and Jerry says, oh, get one more, make sure you have the garage there. Well, I didn't. So I, you know, that's one thing. The other thing that shows up in this one, a little bit, all these little white flowers here, it's all creepy Jenny, and there's another, there's another picture there showing when it's owned by the same property owner. Yeah, here, this, the garage is in back of this house, and of course, here's the area that just covered it, the creepy Jenny, so that, that's a weed problem. There's a couple of, one, I have to say, there's one we got to take out here, because they actually mowed it a little bit, and, of course, Fulkert's, he's had a big mess out there in the past, some of it's got cleaned up, but he still has, and there's a pile of concrete or rocks over here, and there's some pallets and stuff over here, I don't know if people in pallets in town, or there's a number of those that are, are around the area.
Now, when they're, it was good, and then now, like, it's starting to start again.
I mean, yeah, he had gotten to, he had done some work to get it cleaned up and stuff, and, yeah, it's kind of rooting back again. This is, this is one of more, third cut one, I guess, with just mowing, this is Jelcet's house up there, and of course, it's, it hasn't been mowed, I don't think it's been mowed all summer. Smith is one that can come off of this, but, and this was, way to scrawl down, and this was kind of a varying, one more, I think, or may, oh, maybe not. Middlestead is right next door to it. That one, again, I don't know if that one had been mowed at all this summer, I mean, you can see the grass, oh, you're the camper, it's covered up there. You can almost, you can almost see a camera, yes. And then, oh, and there was, again, Knights, that was down there, Langorres. Oh, we'll go back to this one, especially that one, when a neighbor was in here, Budalier was in here complaining about this, there were, she did do some work and so on, this is kind of one of those degree ones, is it good enough or not? I guess nothing more has been done, but when he came in here to complain, this deck was laying, oh, between the house and this structure over here, fencing area over here, there's another deck laying over here, bricks and stuff, a lot of this stuff is kind of just strewn around the yard. Boy, they went in and the deck got put up here, the other deck apparently was hauled off because it's, it wasn't there anymore. And the mess got organized, so, you know, is that, is that okay, or not? And then there's Knight and Langorres. One of the things that Jerry mentioned here is there's this old garden shit back here, and of course, there's bicycle lawn mowers and stuff, which doesn't show up in the picture on the other side. And then Langorres, again, they got pallets, there's pallets here, there's pallets, it's, there isn't anything that could be a health hazard, but, you know, appearance-wise, I think what, what he was looking for, I guess, we go around and look at these at other places, I mean, we're, could be just picking on these people, and there are other places that are kind of in that same place, and how specific do you want to be? No letters have been sent out to any of these people, the mowing ones, and I said, few to one, well, anybody's, no, you can wait, by the mowing for Middlesteads and Jelcets. I mean, I have sent a number of those out, I'll get those out, I guess, unless you have any other thoughts, but I'll get those out. You know, and one of the problems with the unsightly yards and junk items and stuff in there is the process that we have to go through. I mean, we go through and we send a letter out to them, and give them a time period, and I, typically, I've given them like 10 days or the next commission meeting, I think it's actually supposed to be longer than that, and then they come in here and see you, talk to you as far as why they don't think they should have to do anything, find that they do and they don't do it, then end up going to court, I mean, they're not shelling the snow out of there almost to get, you know, so that might be another thing you want to look at as far as, and I don't know, Pat's got some comments, we could streamline that process, the ordinance.
Were you planning on sending out letters to these people, or just?
I get nine, well, I guess to the more of Jelcet and Middlestead for the mowing. But, you know, and these other ones, yeah, and, and talking to President Overhaw, some of these, I feel like, I don't like being put in that position where, it's one of those beauties in the eye of the beholder, sometimes you need more eyes out there, so whether there's, you know, a couple other commissioners or something like that, as far as draft a letter, say, yeah, you've done enough, no, you haven't done enough, yes, this one warrants a letter, you know, it's, somebody's starting to grasp a straw, and to a certain degree, I'd probably quote to say it, but where do you draw that line? Yeah, this is a little bit unsightly, it's really not a problem, and the next one, yeah, now you've stepped over that line.
Kind of need to wait until the neighbors complain.
Yeah, well, you know, with the mowing stuff, typically, I have done that, I've waited until the neighbors complained, because there's been a couple of times, I've been gone this summer, and, you know, the neighbors could probably say, hey, why doesn't he mow in the yard? Well, I got to it soon as I got back, you know, and they knew I was gone, so, yeah, you get to it, and, you know, so, with the mowing ones, other than a couple, they haven't been at all, I don't think, this year.
Well, Steve, you, you made a comment, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. We've got an ordinance within the city that, by definition, gives some examples of what we qualify as a nuisance within the city. Would it, would it be fair to publish to our community what the expectations may be based upon the city ordinances, as opposed to all of a sudden getting a letter in your mailbox saying that?
mailbox saying that your pallets that maybe they thought were a piece of art, or were not really perceived that way by the rest of the community?
Kind of, yes, it's not that clear cut, I mean, as far as the ordinance goes, basically, it has to do with trash, rubbish, and debris, you know, and I mean, trash and rubbish are somewhat defined, you know, is every item that's in there, you know, what becomes, you know, what is trash and rubbish, you know, and again, well, no, that's, that's a spare parts thing or something, you know, I mean, if, well, I mean, we certainly, I mean, the ordinance, as far as what is a nuisance, is online, as opposed to, you know, do something to highlight a little more, or something to get people to, maybe buy it by it, but, you know, sometimes, well, some of these people have been sent letters in the past, and, you know, they go through and they do a little bit, and it looks a little better, you know, rather than having pallets drawn about three different places in the yard, they get them down to one, well, okay, it looks a little better, but, you know, you're really not.
So, was President Obron or you yourself looking for any actionable items?
I guess not so much tonight, I guess more for, I think, for you to think about it, and, like I say, it gets to be a rather cumbersome process to go through and file, well, and they end up appearing in court, I mean, the end result, if they don't do it, so, and then if they don't do it, well, then the city could, we've only had one case like that that we've done, and it got to be awfully expensive, it was $900, I think, or something like that, was what it ended up costing, I mean, it was more than that.
I know we do have some, some history within the city, where we've seen letters to the editor and whatnot about cars sitting in particular areas for extended periods of time, you know, some different examples that maybe fall into some of these categories here. I guess we would need to decide, do we wait for somebody within the public to, to raise it like that? Certainly, if you, if we start making it a process of going around the city once a month, looking at properties, making lists, with the cumbersome process that you're talking about, it, it could, could become something much bigger than maybe we would ever intend it to be, maybe unnecessarily.
Steve, I guess, isn't, you like on the mowing part, because they're like, they let spells on the ordinance?
Yeah, basically, with the mowing stuff, it's, anything over six inches in height or more is considered a nuisance, and they have to get it mowed. You know, but even at that, by the time you send a letter, give them some time to mow, well, now it's not six inches in height anymore, it's, you know, it's a foot high, or, you know, some of these, well, you can almost, like, the ones you can almost see in campers. And we've actually had a, there's one, I sent a letter to, this is before Jerry and I even went around, keeps the front yard mowed, that's backyard, and now, whenever they get the trees picked up, yeah, they crew on them going in there and mowing it, you know, and that's not cheap either, the way the ordinance is written is the minimum fee is 50 bucks, but they're billed for actual equipment time and man-hours in there, and so, the minimum has been 50 bucks, but they have gone in to do it, but it's been closer to $200, by the time you get the equipment man-hours and stuff in there, so, that's just to get your lot mowed.
Have we had those people pay those bills?
They pay them one way or the other, because if, if they don't pay the bill, it goes on, put it on the special assessments on the property taxes, and then, yeah, we may not get it right away, but, but they will have to end up paying it.
Okay, so that's something we're just going to think about, and, and...
Yeah, probably, again, bring it up again at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, see if we want to move forward with this, or how you want to move forward with it?
I can listen to the arena, the star of the school, at least, on some of his items.
And maybe make it aware that we are going to be going around and, and trying to get it cleaned up a little bit, and if there is some stuff in your backyard, you might want to get rid of it, or in your front yard. That's not a decoration. Okay, and then we have the bills. Questions on it? We would entertain motion.
So, move approval of the bills as presented.
There is a motion on the floor? There is a second. Any discussion? Do you need a roll call?
Hiller. Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. We will adjourn the meeting.